All right. Hey, everybody. I'm here for another insight conversation as part of the ATL Education Expo. I'm with Ishay Collins, the Director of Programs from Jump Start here in Atlanta, as well as the Vice Chair of the Atlanta Public Schools Board of Education. Ishay, thank you for taking the time with me.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
I'm really excited to chat with you. We were just talking about this before I hit record, but because I feel like board members don't oftentimes get to talk more about how they got into this work in the first place. And you yourself have an extensive background in education in a couple of different ways that maybe aren't what you would normally see from a board member. And so I'd love to start by just hearing the backstory. Like, how did you get into education in the first place? And what were some of your early stops and roles?
Oh, wow. Yeah, great question. So I am, I always start with my experience growing up in Atlanta. I am born and raised here in Atlanta. I grew up in the East Atlanta area, Zone 6, at the corner of Greenwood and Second Avenue. And I, you know, I'm one of six. And my mother was, you know, my mother was, you know, a single parent at that time, just raising us, wanted best education for her children. And so I saw the, I saw the differences in education that I received from my neighbors and friends that went to other schools. And we literally lived right across the street. So much so that my mother sent me and my brothers and my sister to live in DeKalb County with my grandmother who I matriculated through school. And so from, I always, that is the focal point for me as far as when I knew for a fact I wanted to go into education because I knew the difference that it would make based on the experiences that I had from my own personal experience. And so from there, so from there, I went to Spelman College and was a Bonner Scholar, really got involved with the community. And one of my good friends who sits on Cobb County School Board, Sharice, that's why I mentioned her, good friends. She and I, we served together while we were in undergrad. And at that time, she was telling me about the opportunity to teach in classrooms, to teach for America once we graduated. And so we both, you know, yeah, so we applied. I applied for Teach for America because I was a psychology pre-med major at Spelman. Thought I was on my way to medical school, but I knew, my heart knew I wanted to be in the classroom. I wanted to be in education. And so I applied to Teach for America and got in and chose to teach in Atlanta Public Schools where I taught 4th and 5th grade. And so I taught 4th and 5th grade at A.D. Williams Elementary at that time that was located in a Mon Homes housing community. And so, of course, when they eradicated all the public housing in Atlanta, the elementary school closed as a result because there, you know, there were, there were no more, there were no children to fill the school. But it was also that, that point was a catalyst, was a catalyst for me continuing this path because I also saw at that time, the different type of education, level of education that my children received compared to other children throughout the district. And I, as an early teacher, was constantly fighting and advocating. And my principal was along with me and resources that we need, that we knew we needed to educate the children on the west side of town, you know, differently than children throughout the district. And so for me, it was seeing that fight in the classroom, but also having this dismal feeling of the fact I felt voiceless. I felt like I was just, you know, I was in the classroom. No one was hearing, you know, no one was hearing my perspective. No one was seeing what we were trying, what we were fighting for. No one was seeing and feeling the belief and the faith that we had in our students, our children, to know that not only they deserve better, to be better. And it was our obligation to provide that, you know, to provide that for them and to be that voice. And so from that point, I decided to leave the classroom and pursue law school because I knew I wanted to be able to be at the table with individuals and the leaders that are making these decisions because many of them did not look like me. They, they did not have experience. They didn't understand the story of my children that I was teaching. They didn't understand the story of teachers in the, in the classroom. And so that's when, that's when I left the classroom, pursued, went to law school and, you know, worked at the Children's Defense Fund and came back to, came back to Atlanta where I joined Jump Start about 10 years ago, pushing the importance of early education. And so I knew, I knew then to start, yes, to start breaking these, these systems and addressing the issues of equity and equal opportunity for our children. We had to expose our children and our families as early as possible. So my work with Jump Start reflects just that, our advocacy for high-quality early education opportunities for children in low, in low-income communities. And of course, I knew, I, you know, I knew that I wanted to be a school board member. Or I knew I wanted to do this work, whether it was the legislative route, the policy advisor, the political advocate. And so eight years ago, eight years ago, when I, eight years ago, when I decided to run for school board, I knew the vision and the vision that I wanted, the vision and impact I wanted to have for children and the community, and our communities in Atlanta, and the type of representation that our communities serve. I represent the complete south side of the city, the communities and families and children that was hardest hit by not only the cheating and scoundrel, but just constantly being marginalized, constantly having to fight for just the basic standard of high-quality resources and education. And I wanted to ensure we had that voice representation on board to continue to, not only to continue that fight, but to demand and also to receive that. And so that's where I sit before and both of those today and both of those roles.
You, uh, yeah, it's a phenomenal story. And I want to dig into a couple of parts of it. First of all, I didn't even know you went to law school, so that's incredible. And I was like, you know, you and I know each other a little bit. And you said eight years when you ran, because I remember when you ran. And I was like, wow, eight years ago, that's a while. We've been around.
That's a long time, right?
Feels like forever. So I'd love to ask you, first and foremost, as a teacher, you mentioned you were a 4th and 5th grade teacher. And you said that was really when you first started seeing, at least as a professional, you mentioned growing up, as a professional, you started seeing some of the inequities at play. Do you remember some of the things that you saw or felt that were missing that really stood out to you? And you were just like, why is this the way it is?
Um, yeah, I was just, I mean, the basic was resource allocations and materials. I was spending so much out of my own personal pocket just to get basic standard reading, you know, literacy and math material, you know, math materials. And even, even just like the basic materials that a teacher, classrooms, and children should have. What was so frustrating, and I can recall the, you know, this experience and a few friends, you know, I remember we were even receiving our books, you know, like just simple things like textbooks and resources. School started August, we weren't getting them to November, December. You know, just those basic things of any other community where parents were, were community mobilized and were able to use their fourth voice, this would not have happened. And so it was simple things, it's not, not having proper, you know, the right resources. Opportunities, just the simple things like field trips and, you know, funds to do things. And I think the biggest part of that was the fact everyone knew that, you know, A.D. Williams and a lot of schools on the west side that were centered in housing communities, the population and the income of those families and residents were so low that additional resources needed to be allocated, additional funds needed to be allocated to provide equitable experience. Everyone knew that, but no one was taking the aggressive step and the action to make that happen. And so we went without, our kids went without, our kids stayed in the schools. You know, our kids stayed in the school all year with no experiences. If we wanted to, you know, if you got one field trip, that was an amazing, you know, you did, you made it happen for that year. And so it was just constantly seeing that. The second part of that, what I also thought, what I also saw, it was just so frustrating that no one thought to address it. We had so many families that looked at the school as the beacon that was coming to the school, wanting services, wanting help, and was being turned, turned away because the school couldn't have, couldn't provide it. And not to say the school, you know, it's our obligation to fully provide it, but we can at least provide the connection, provide the, provide the relationship, direct families and community, you know, community members on where they can go to receive that help. And so that didn't, you know, we didn't have that. And it was a constant, it was a constant issue that, it was a constant issue and something that was apparent all the time where the community saw the school as a beacon. And so we would see parents come in wanting to, you know, how do I go back to school to get my GED? I need food, you know, I just need, you know, food to last me and my family for, for the week. Can you help me with rental assistance, you know, utility assistance? And so it was just frustrating also seeing that where the community was crying out and we were all, it felt, it felt a lot of ways, we were all in it by ourselves all the time. And my principal, you know, Dr. Cliff Intez, and he passed a few years ago, but he was, I saw him, we were fighting. There was a group, we were constantly fighting and fighting and fighting for, you know, for these things. And just to magnify the voice and the need of the holistic approach to educating children that we saw, we saw there every single day.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I mean, I had a similar experience when I was a teacher. But, you know, I think people, and I don't necessarily realize, especially today with the internet being what it is and like our ability to search for things a lot differently than we once were able to. And obviously, when we were in the classroom, you know, that was around to some extent. But there is this semblance, like, there's this idea that the school is sort of the new community center in many ways for a lot of communities. It's this place where folks go hoping for a direction. And it also, it brings up some interesting questions of what the role, what role the school should have in a community. Right? And I'm curious, I see people all over the map on this. I'm curious what you think, like, in an ideal world, what is the role of the school in the community these days? Should they really be the beacon, this central hub of information and resources? Or, you know, should it just be for instruction? And like, you know, we should figure out ways to get those services to them in other places or connect them with the resources in other ways?
Yeah, so my, my, my first, my initial response to your, your question was no. But I firmly believe, and the reason why I said no at the beginning was because it becomes, it sets, it sets a standard and it sets the climate that I've seen and we've experienced, when all else fails, blames the schools. And I push back on that a lot. I push on it, push back on that wholeheartedly because I firmly believe everyone is at stake on the success of our children, our families, and our community. That whole list, the schools, we are the beacon of the community to ensure that your child has a holistic, high-quality education. We, and we, and let us do that, let us do that work. Let the teachers that are trained to do that, the principals that are trained to lead, the administrators that are trained to administer, and let us do that. But it is not fair to put the, the, of all the issues that a community has from, you know, crying, you know, crime, food insecurity, infrastructure, affordable housing, transit, all of those issues, it, it, a lot of times becomes on the shoulders of the school system. And a lot, and as a board member, that's what I constantly push back on. And I get those calls, I get calls from my family, from members, a lot of time, the same as Collins. Can you help me even with the, I can't, you know, my child is virtual, right? So right now, my, my child is virtual, we're virtual. We don't have solid connection in the community. I can provide the technology, I provide the web, we provide Wi-Fi access, the drop zones that are in a community, I need city, you know, like city council to help with that. And so it's a lot of, that's an example of where I do feel the schools can be a beacon for truly educating children and providing that holistic approach with everyone at the table, everyone that's involved. It's not the school system, it's not, the schools or the school system place to be the grunt and the solver of all the issues that are happening in the community. And I feel traditionally, historically, that's what it has been. We're starting to evolve more in that space and more, and more stakeholders are coming to the table, which is amazing, but I do push back on that, I do push back on that a lot.
Yeah, no, I get that. And it's, it's interesting, I was having a similar conversation with another insight guest talking about, you know, people, especially in education, love to throw around, "It takes a village to raise a child," right? Like, that's the phrase everybody talks about. And I think what we oftentimes forget with that is like, when we say that, a village means the whole village, right? Not just the family and the teachers, but like your local businesses, your local religious institutions, your local political, you know, appointees and elected officials. And it's like, I think it's gotten to this place where we say that we really just, we're thinking about just the parents and the teachers, right? Or this, you know, the family members. I'm curious, why do you think it's gotten to this place where the school is getting shouldered with so much of the burden or the responsibility? You know, I have my own ideas or hypotheses, but I feel like there, maybe there used to be other community organizations, institutions that were more well-established or stable. Maybe it's a transancy issue, that schools are the rock. I mean, it's probably all these things, but I'm curious, from your vantage point, what have you seen, why do you think it's, it continues to be this place where we keep pushing it on the schools? And then inevitably, the schools end up pushing as much of that onto the teachers? Because that's how that structure just is organized.
Yeah, because I, you know, I believe the reason why that is is because to a point, it does, in fact, starts in education. So let's take a, but I do feel over time, as things evolve, other entities also need to help with that. So a simple, you know, and I won't say simple, let's say the example of, say workforce. When you have communities where there are not a lot of jobs or, or you hear about, you know, the workforce not being highly educated enough to take on certain jobs, then what do you do? You strip it away and say, what's the root cause of that? Oh, it's education, what's the root cause of that? If that person grew up on, on the west side and this was their, you know, their elementary school, then this is where it starts. And I think that's where, I think mentally, that's where, when we start getting to a root cause analysis, that's where that comes, where that comes from. So we know about the credit to prison pipeline. We know about the impact of an educated workforce. We know about healthcare and those things. And I think that's why it goes, it always centers back to the schools because schools, we are the foundation for that. And, and like I said again, we take ownership for that. But let us do, as we take ownership of that, let us do the job to fix that and correct that. But we can't also continue to correct the, you know, correct the issue when it is sometimes beyond, beyond the scope of what we do. So using the same workforce, yes, using the same workforce development example, when that person or that, you know, that person becomes a 21 or 22, yes, we do need, you know, City of Atlanta, you know, like city services or workforce development opportunities or other entities to partner with us and be a strong partner to help us catch that and important to that. And so I think a lot of times, that's where the breakdown in fact happens. And when we, and we get that is because of the fact when people start doing their own root cause analysis and breaking it down to the, the, the beginning, it always goes to schools. Same thing with real estate. Communities are not, you know, you know, as, as strong as, you know, schools are the beacon. If it's not a good school district, then your property values may not be, you know, as favorable. And so you get into all of these things where, when all else fails, it becomes the schools. And we push, we push the conversation and we push the wall a lot to say, it's not always, it's not always there, you know, it's not always the schools that star. We also think about the entire community conversation that needs to happen, even with our youngest learners.
Right. And I think it's a, it's a great segue into Jump Start. Because I want to preface this by saying, I think Jump Start's been around for a while, but I would argue that a lot of people probably don't know what Jump Start does any longer because, you know, things come and go in terms of their importance. So I'd love for you to just give us a baseline, what's Jump Start's main mission and work? And then what's been your role over there for the last 10 years?
Yeah, absolutely. So Jump Start, the mission of Jump Start is to ensure that every child enters kindergarten prepared to succeed. And what that looks like is offering high-quality language literacy development and social emotional, you know, social emotional support for our youngest children. So Jump Start, we target the age group, three, you know, three years, three years old to five years old. We don't, you know, you know, our target base, we, we have strong partnerships with K through 12 and the team that work in partner. But our focus is to focus on our earliest learners and their families. And so what we do, we recruit individuals to serve in our classrooms. We, it's an AmeriCorps funded program to serve as supplemental instructors in our pre-K classrooms and low-income communities, those communities that, that, that have, you know, have poverty and meet, meet, you know, federal guidelines for funding and things of that nature. Because what we do know, those communities typically have a higher demand of early learning, of children and that need early learning education, but the slots in those centers are, you know, are always filled or certain communities don't have an early learning center at all. So what we do, we target those communities and provide that additional supplemental support of teachers and resources at no cost to early learning centers to, to help target those children and making sure that they enter kindergarten prepared to succeed. Because what the research does in fact show us is that, is, you know, our earliest learners from those communities enter, enter elementary school at least a grade and a half to a half a grade or two, a grade or two grades behind their counterparts. And so it starts that educational gap. And our goal is to stop it as early as we can, you know, as early as, as we can to ensure that every child have, you know, enter school prepared to, you know, prepared to succeed and have those stronger connections along the way. So we work with our, we work with children, teachers, and families to ensure that for our children. When I started with Jump Start, I was recruited to build the network at Georgia State. So I started at Georgia State University and built, and built the Jump Start program there along with, governance with the College of Education, the College of Arts and Sciences of college students and community members that actually wanted to be teachers. Something similar to how I was, how I was recruited when I was at Spelman. And so did that work with, at Georgia State? And over the years, became a part of the national team to expand our, to expand our work throughout the country. So I oversee our work and growth in the DC area, in Mississippi, Arkansas, in the Midwest area, and also in the west coast, which is California and Washington State. And so I love that, I always tell everybody, I love my rainbow array of work portfolio that I work with because it allows me to see how our program is impacted across the country. And it also provides for me a level of educational diversity to see what, you know, what, something maybe amazingly happening on the west coast that we have not thought of on the east coast. And having that exposure allows me to kind of do some, a lot of strategic and innovative thinking of, how can we advance the efforts of our children and our teachers and our core members in this space?
Yeah, no, absolutely. I think, you know, it's, it's funny because, and you mentioned this yourself, but like, there is this growing appreciation for the value of early childhood education. And I actually was just talking to an educator moving down to Atlanta, asking about early childhood. She's like, yeah, I was really excited because Georgia has universal pre-K. And I was like, well, you know, to a point, like, it's one of those things, like, it's a politically great thing to be able to say, but in practice, we're still well short on, on seats and slots and all that. And, you know, you, you mentioned something that I want to touch on around seeing best practices elsewhere. Because one of the themes that come out of these conversations has been, is collaboration and like best practice sharing happening enough? Even from like district to district? And so I'm curious, and I'm also going to dive into how you got onto the school board in a second. But as a school board member, do you feel like, is collaboration happening between districts a lot? Or is it, everybody's kind of got enough on their plate that there's not even room to necessarily do that?
No, I would definitely say collaboration is happening because we are being very intentional on making it happen. In the past, before I was elected, I probably will say no. But I know for a fact, like, like, you know, I have friends that sits on school boards across the country. We call, we have, we have regular calls on, on saying, how did you do this? What, how did you guys do this? What was something, you know, what was the community input or feedback or pushback on this? And so I know for a fact, I call, you know, me and my colleagues on the board, we do that extremely often, which I'm extremely grateful for because it has allowed us to do things like student-based funding. It has allowed us to right-size our early education options for our teachers. It has allowed us to do signature programming. A lot of the great work that is happening in Atlanta is fairly new, but a lot of that is based on us looking at, okay, what have, you know, how did this work in your district? What were some of the things, you know, in New York? What were some of those things, the hurdles that you had to cross? And so I definitely will say, we are definitely collaborating across, across the aisle and also across the country in those best practices. And also having an administration with the superintendent that, you know, Dr. Haring now and Dr. Coster before, that was very adamant about that as well, where they, you know, reached out to other superintendents and other administrative schools across the country to also see like, well, we're thinking about doing this. How did this, you know, how does work, can we bring you in? Just to kind of talk through it with you guys. And I think that's what's necessary, you know, that's what's necessary to move the work forward. We don't have all the answers. And if, you know, if we did not do that, we would not be moving, you know, we would not be moving in a space of what I feel is different and innovative in education because we would not have thought about, you know, thought about half of these things and we didn't see certain things happen across the country or even across the world, so.
No, that's comforting to hear. I always love when I, you know, I think a lot of people don't realize that, you know, just because you get elected to a position doesn't mean you automatically, I mean, some people do this, I'm sure, but a lot of folks who genuinely want to be public servants and get elected, you go into this realizing like, you care a lot, but you don't know everything yet, and so.
Right. And it's okay, that's, yeah, it's okay. Yeah, you don't supposed to have all the answers. And it's okay not to have all the answers. And I truly feel that we've embraced that. And I think now more and more, I'm starting to see other public servants embrace that because I often say that. It's so, I don't have all the, you know, I don't have the answer and that's okay. But you know what, I know how to hustle and try to, you know, figure it out. And we're going to figure this out together.
Yeah, absolutely. So I want to, before we get to our big future-looking question, I want to first hear the story about how you ended up deciding to run for school board. What was that process like? Now, you, unlike a couple of the other folks, sounded like you had this idea to run maybe a little bit earlier. And so you kind of knew this, and is that, is that accurate? Or did you have to have people kind of really encourage you to get into it?
So it's so interesting, Ian, that you, you mentioned that. I remember, and I came across this, I wrote this as a goal, a 10-year goal of mine when I was in, when I was a teacher, when I was teaching in Atlanta Public Schools because I knew it then. I actually thought that, I, I knew I wanted to do the educational advocacy work. And I thought that I would be like the chief of staff, the person behind the scenes writing the legislation, the lobbyist. I never thought that I would be the elected person, the elected person sitting in the seat. What happened was, I can't, when I moved back to Atlanta, I purchased my home in southwest, southwest Atlanta. And my predecessor, Yolanda Johnson, who was a school board member that represented this area, she's an attorney as well. And I remember that I was sitting at, I remember sitting at the Gavwa, with George Association of Black Women Attorneys, our bar meeting. And she announced that she wasn't seeking reelection. And if we knew of anyone that would be amazed, that would be a miz and board member to help, you know, turn around Atlanta Public Schools, that we needed, you know, we needed to talk. And this is, it was we, right? It was a we conversation, it was us in this room. Went home that night and a close friend of, a close girlfriend of mine is from college. She's Candace McKinley, she's an attorney as well. She called me and my phone start ringing. And over the, like, the few days of, of that conversation, everyone was like, Ishay, you need to consider this, you need to consider this, you need to consider this. And I even said, I thought, was calling them, I'm like, well, how about we all do this together? And so it was that conversation, yeah, it was that conversation about, you know, you hear about wanting to do the work and be on the ground to actually do the work. But being in the elected space, running a campaign, raising the money, you know, the technical pieces of running a campaign and being elected official, that wasn't what I, you know, I didn't have any knowledge in that. So I made, you know, I spoke to Yolanda and spoke to Sadie Denar, the predecessor before, you know, my, before that and, and really got to understand of the full role. I knew I could do the work. And I also felt like I was, my experiences, I was, I was prepared for that work. I, you know, I was with Jump Start for ye, for a few years. I worked at the Defense Fund, advocate on Capitol Hill. I've really been involved and understood the issues. And so I decided to, I decided to run. It was an open election, I felt this was my time. I had people telling me that this was not my time to, you know, you're young, you know, you, you have time. And I was like, no, I don't think so. The energy that I had and the opportunity of where Atlanta was at that time and the opportunity for me to effectuate the kind of change I knew I wanted to make, I knew that it was time. So that was a catalyst for me, you know, running to seek, you know, running to seek reelection. And I just met great people, you know, like, like you and Next Generation Man and so many other great people that understood what we were trying, you know, understood my vision and understood what we were trying to do and, and went and went for it.
Was the, so what was the campaigning like? You know, you said that wasn't really something you had experienced necessarily.
Yeah.
Like, you know, because I was here, you know, there's a lot of teachers out there who hopefully watch this and maybe get inspired to consider running eventually, or even just education stakeholders.
Yeah.
So much of it is like, you just, we all assume we don't know how to do it, right? Like, what do you actually do? Do you just go to the event that you can find and talk to anybody? Or is there like more strategy to it, or is it both?
It's always strategy and planning to it. I, I went to, I went to Georgia Wind, voting, women's, you know, women's. It's always strategy and planning to it. I, I went to, um, I went to Georgia Wind, Boden Academy, women's, you know, women's campaign academy to learn the facets of running a successful campaign. Because I've been in education, I knew the educational issues. I definitely made sure that I attended community meetings and neighborhood meetings and even educational conversations to understand what was actually happening in, in Atlanta at that time. Um, you know, we know, we know the issues and depth, but sometimes it, it plays out differently on the ground. And so it was important for me to understand what was the community's aspect and view of what was happening in the schools, what was happening in the district and the, and the representative that they wanted. And so that for me, you know, I was, you know, I checked that box of, yeah, I know that I'm the representative that they wanted, just with the level of advocacy and courage and, and voice that they wanted to have. Um, and so it was a combination of, it was a combination of all those things. I was a student and I will say I was a student, I was, I became a student, that whole process. A student of learning how to run a successful campaign, a student and how to build a successful team that's want to help you be successful. And I became a student, I, I truly feel and understanding community voice and community needs and how to be an advocate. It was not, you know, the campaign, I will be very upfront, very upfront. It wasn't easy. It wasn't easy at all. The easiest part for me was the fact, I, I had, I knew I had the experience and I had the vision of what I knew I was willing to fight for, to make the district that I represented and to make the, the schools I represented an amazing school. And I could, and I could communicate that to, to the community very clear. You will walk away from me and you would know Ishay is going to make sure our children have X, Y, Z, our families have this, our community stay informed. And she's going to make sure she's going to push back on making sure things are funded. They knew that from me. The other part was selling myself enough to say, now, do you trust me? To, do you trust me enough to make this happen to where I can have your vote in support of me? And that was, that was tough sometimes. I had meet people to say, oh, she's too young, she's too, you know, I feel like she's too young. I think the most hurtful part, I, and I, someone said she's too educated. And I was like, well, that don't, that, that makes no sense. How can you be too educated for a district where our graduation rate was yeah, it was forty-nine percent at that time. I'm born and raised and bred here in Atlanta. I that was, that was some of the hurtful part of it. But that's what I did. I became a student and making sure I understood what it needed to take to get to the seat. And then of course, continue, I'm, I'm still a student. I'm constantly evolving and learning on what, what it takes to, to continue to be a great board member for the community I represent and the city that I love.
What was, what was, uh, election night like that first time?
So you asked a great question, Ian, cause anyone that'll tell you, they're like, Ishay made it through. Um, you know, my, it's very stressful, you know, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't even say election night, I would say the election cycle. Because you know, you have your early voting, because your absentee voting, and then, you know, election night is like the, pretty much the last day of the last day. But mind you, I also had a runoff. So I, I had two election nights, I had two election cycles. Yes. And so is it, for me, it was just a really stressful, it was just a really stressful time, but I sat down with my team and knew that we had done everything that we could possibly do. And that was the best feeling. The end of the day, Ishay, you, you, we ran the, the best, strongest campaign that we could. And now let's see what happens. And so that's how and that was both times. That's how we were, that's how I was able to make that happen.
Man, well, I, I think one of the things we don't give, uh, anybody who runs for elected office, even if you know, especially in today's world where there's so, so much polarization at the, you know, the national level and state levels. Like if, it takes a lot of courage to run for office, right? Cause you are really putting yourself out there. Um, no matter like whether you actually care about it or not, which obviously you do and most people do, but it's still putting yourself out there and having like really saying, invest in me and like trust me. Give money so I can back myself, right? These are all weird sort of unnatural positions that we all socially have to put ourselves in if you're gonna run. Um, and then, you know, once you're in office, it's not like it gets easier, right? Like
Right, yeah.
With things like the pandemic. Right. Plus people forget oftentimes that, uh, a lot of our board members, yourself very much included, have full-time jobs on top of being a school board member. So I want to give you credit for that. And I, I want to close this conversation by looking ahead. And so we ask folks is, um, you know, like good teachers, we like to plan backwards, you know, backwards design here. Um, so thinking ahead to the year twenty fifty, so about thirty years from now, what do you all of your perspective, what do you think education should look like by then, hopefully?
Yeah, thirty years from now and not yet, and I would even say before then, education would truly look like, you know, this holistic experience, but very, but I really truly see it being an individualized experience for each child. And that is going to look different. Um, it will have those layers of equity that we talk about and not only opportunity, but resource and you know, family engagement and the whole list of support. I, I definitely think it's going to force, uh, we will be, we will be forced into truly building an educational system that addresses each need of, uh, each child's need in the individual space. And so I easily see that being a variety of options, which, you know, whether it is certain curriculums, certain formats, I don't think virtual is going, I don't think virtual is going anywhere. So I can easily see the innovation in our ed tech space growing to, you know, to educate our children more. Um, it will be of our, you know, what, what the individualized content look like for our children with, you know, with special needs, but but to the level where their experience mirrors the equitable experience of a child just in, in our standard classrooms. Um, and I, and I, and I firmly believe that that's, that is what we will be in thirty years where schools, um, and also with that, it forces us to push a lot of autonomy to our actual schools. I think that the head office, the central office of a district will be extremely decentralized by then because the individualization is going to require so much on the ground support that our actual schools will truly become pretty, probably be, be, become like their many central offices. And so I think, um, I think that's what, I think for, that's what will be in some space in twenty thirty. Um, I will continue to, and, and I think what's going to happen is it actually is going to continue, it's going to force us to continue to to ensure that equity is embedded. I will say this last little thing about that, you know, equity has become this, you know, this fashionable term right now. No, it's very real. And I want people to understand it's not going anywhere and it should not go anywhere. Because that's how we ensure by twenty thirty and, and beyond, that every child has a, you know, has a great educational experience that provide opportunities for them to determine what path, whatever path they want to go. If it's not college, they know that the career path they want to go to. If it's not a career, they know what they want to do when they leave the K, you know, pre-K through twelfth grade space. And I would even say starting, you know, our birth through five sector. So I truly believe that twenty thirty education is going, our children's education, educational experience is going to be highly individualized. But I, I will fight every day to make sure that it's absolutely holistic and equitable. And it's going to look different for all of our children.
I love that. I appreciate you sharing that. And, uh, you know, we'll see if, uh, by twenty fifty, if you're still on the school board, if you had your meeting with everybody in Atlanta and sort of towards on by then, uh, you could be, uh, you know, pass that legacy on. But, um, once again, this is a, with Ishay Collins, the Director of Programs from Jumpstart, as well as the Vice Chair at the Atlanta Public Schools Board of Education. Thank you so much for giving your time for the ATL Education Expo. It was awesome to hear your story and to hear you get involved.